January twenty eighth, two thousand and fourteen meeting. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, bear with me a minute. This housekeeping list is getting longer and longer. I think we need to do something about this. There are openings on the following committees. Audit Committee, Bike Path Committee, Business Development Commission, Carver Cultural Council, Carver Housing Authority, a state representative, Commission on Disability, Earth Removal Committee, a Growers representative, Finance Committee, Local Housing Partnership Committee, Marcus Atwood Trustees, Old Colony Regional Vote Tech School Committee, and Town Building Study Committee. Please contact the Selectmen's Office for an application. And also, don't forget donations to the food pantry can be made at the Council on Aging or the public library. People are still out there struggling, having a lot of problem with heating assistance this year, funds have run out, and so people are struggling financially. The Police Department has recently installed a secure prescription medication disposal box in the lobby. This box will allow citizens to dispose of unused, unwanted, or expired prescription medication in a safe and secure manner. Medication can be dropped off at any time. Please, no needle or liquid medications. And with regard to the needles, I know that they're being found all over the place these days. Please don't handle them yourself. Give us a call, we'll have somebody come down and retrieve them and dispose of them, okay? So you don't want to get stuck with one of those things, trust me. All right, first up, we have Edoville to present a donation to the Young People's Alliance of Carver. And who is representing Edoville tonight? Mr. Dolly Pascoli, come on down, please. How are you? Yes, sir, we have a microphone right over here. Do you want to make this presentation to the board? Well, why don't we get the board out there and we'll have a... Well, this would...
To the white back, maybe?
The white back is...
Yeah, but we would be background?
Yeah.
So we'll let you hold it, Mike.
There you go. How's that? Where's the press? Where's the press? Come on, get some good pictures. Not Joe, don't touch your job.
I know you guys moved back a little closer to the helm.
Yeah, come on in.
There you go.
John, go ahead, please.
Well, I would just like to thank the...
Who's going?
You're gonna get the money, Jack, don't worry. I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank, first of all, the citizens of Carver who came to Edoville and participated in the Y-PAC drive. And as a local businessman and as a partner with the town, I look forward to many years of partnership in many different factors, food drives and the Y-PAC and other things that we can work on together. Corey did a great job with this effort, Selectmen, and I think it's just a great, great thing. And candidly, from my own personal feeling is, having young people involved in this or having jobs at Edoville eliminates those needles that you're talking about and other things. Having jobs in the community is the best route for, for success and gives people personal pride. There's nothing better than a job and work. It's a great four-letter word. And, and I'm glad to be part of it, I'm really honored, and I hope this helps you.
Well, thank you very much. Mr. Shaw.
As Executive Director for Y-PAC, I'm speaking for our entire Board of Directors. I'd like to thank Mr. Del Pascoli, I'd like to thank Brenda Johnson, and Edoville I would like to thank. Such organizations we have in town that get behind us and get behind the town, we are so, so grateful. And I'd just like to thank you.
Well, thank you very much, sir. Excellent. Frank, not putting up on the wall down there in the building, huh? Yeah, yeah. That's Corey. She knows. Okay, next up, we have an update on the Bike Path Committee. And if you could please identify yourself, tell everybody who you are and where you're from and...
My name, can you hear me?
Yep.
I'm Jen Bogart, I live on Cranberry Road, and I'm the Vice Chair of the Bike Path Committee. We were formed a little less than two years ago, we're a Select Board Appointed Committee, and since we haven't been in touch since then, I thought it would be a good time to just update you guys on the things that we've accomplished thus far. As you mentioned in the beginning, we are actively looking for members, but with the few members that we have, we've been able to do a lot. So the papers that are going around are just a, a short summary of some of our accomplishments and what we've talked about. It's not to be considered all encompassing, but just a little bit, so you guys know what we're about. The Bike Path Committee was formed, like I said, just under two years ago with the hopes of increasing cycleability in Carver, and specifically to connect to the South Coast Bike Way via Wareham. And the biggest thing that we've done in our existence is that we have established what we'd like to be the official bike route through Carver. And there is a map, one of the pages has a map of our hopeful route, and it includes, you know, South Carver and, and their offshoots to all of the major landmarks and attractions. And we're working with the DPW on getting Sheroes marked along the path, and there's examples of Sheroes on the third page. And the Sheroes are really important to our committee because they are kind of the jumping off point for everything we want to do in the future. The way to increase cycleability in Carver and make Carver a more bicycle-friendly community for the residents and for others, I saw on the agenda, the Best Buddies are hoping for a permit, so big cycling events come through Carver. We have to show state and federal funding agencies that the town supports bicycling in Carver and that the residents support it. And one way that the town supports it is to have an official bike route, and then a way to show that residents support it is to use that bike route. So we have the bike route, and something that we're working on, once the Sheroes are put in place, we will have like promotional events, an official bike ride that can lead to the Carver's farmer market in the summer, thus cross-promoting things that we do in town. Maybe having the Police Department in the summer hand out coupons for free ice cream cones at one of the local ice cream shops to kids they see demonstrating safe bicycling habits and stuff. So that was one of our biggest accomplishments. Over the course of two years, we've been building relationships with other entities and people and corporations that share our common interest in cycling, and I've listed some of the people that we have met with over time. One of our big partners is SERPED, which are the regional planners, and they are so thrilled with what we in Carver have been able to accomplish in our short time. They said they've seen no other town actually come this far in such a short time, which to us makes us feel really good, because right now, we're basically an active committee of three. So we're quite proud of ourselves. And then on the back, I just list some of our goals, and again, it's to get our bike path up and running, get the Sheroes. Eventually, we hope to link up with Wareham via Federal Road, and we've already spoke with Makepeace and opened the conversation about maybe having, having an off-road path there, so pedestrians and joggers and rollerbladers and everybody can feel safe using that road. The Plymouth Bike Path Committee has approached us to linking with them via South Meadow Road in the future. And, I mean, we're, we're doing really well. I've listed a few of our challenges or needs, and, you know, we'll, we'll need some funding down the road, and like I said, the more we can show that the town supports it, the better our chances are for getting big grants to have, you know, bike lanes or off-road paths. Another challenge, like you mentioned, is membership. We'd love more people to come show interest and join up and find out what we're about. We're, we're nice, we don't hurt.
How do they get in touch with you? Do you have a phone number or something you want to shout out to everybody out there in case there's somebody interested?
Sure, probably the best way to do it is to email me at Jennifer M. Bogart, B-O-G-A-R-T, at AOL dot com.
Okay.
And, and yeah, so that's pretty much it, you know, just want to let you guys know we're, we're here, we're active, and, and I, I think we're doing pretty good, so that's it.
Thank you, Jennifer. Anybody have any questions or anything, comments?
One comment I wanted to make is, people didn't get your email address, they can always get ahold of the Town Administrator, and he can forward it to you.
Yeah, and we also work closely with, with Jack Hunter, too. So he's a good liaison point for us as well.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Real quick.
Yep, real, me too.
I just want to thank Jennifer and Sean, and I know there's other committee members, but I just want to particularly point Jennifer and Sean out, because I remember meeting them a few years back, they were very new to the town, and right away, they wanted to get involved to help, and they're just a great role model to all the other young, young parents out there, along with others that have decided to get involved with the town. I just want to thank them and welcome their new baby, Madison, to the world.
Yep, she's the youngest committee member, she can't ride yet, but she will, so...
She's got a seat on the back of the bike, though, right?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just wanted to say thank you for all your work and your success, and I'm glad SERPED is supporting you.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, they're so proud of us, so, yeah.
Great job.
Keep up the good work, Jennifer.
One other quick question, have you put together, you mentioned in here your last bullet on challenges and needs for the committee budget, when do you think you might have an estimate on, on the cost for making the appropriate signage around town?
Actually, we are waiting to hear back from John Woods, he is working on that for us, because he has more insider knowledge. So I've already approached him, and he is working on it, and hopefully we'll have it shortly.
I'll make sure of that.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have a request to hold craft fairs, Dr. Irving Beveridge. Dr. Beveridge, how are you doing tonight, sir?
I'm all right.
I never said that, come on. You look like you're in better shape than me.
This is my pet peeve, that I can't do anything that I'm supposed to do. I...
Why don't you tell everybody out there on TV, land, Dr. Beveridge, who you are, where you live, and what you want to do?
Dr. Irving Beveridge, I live at seventy-seven Center Street in Carver. I did, for a long time, run Carver Counseling, and I was a psychotherapist for forty-eight years, until I had three strokes.
Oh, my God.
And recently had a fall and ended up in the hospital with a good black eye, and they asked me what the other guy looked like, and I told them I thought that there wasn't another guy.
It was two.
But I have a pretty hard head, so the concussion that I had didn't do too much to me. I have one good eye, and this eye is gone, I'm legally blind in that, but I'm still driving.
Chief?
A little bit. A little bit. Not much, but a little bit.
Carefully, we hope.
Yes, oh, definitely, yes, yes.
If he's legally blind, he can drive.
He just can't take, he just can't take right-hand turns. And you're here tonight, Doctor, because you want to do what, hold some craft fairs?
I want to open a craft center on the corner of Center and Pond. For five years, I had Bev's Bargains, and it was hugely successful. If you read my letter...
I was gonna say, I thought you'd been having craft fairs for years.
But basically, I had to give up Bev's Bargains because of the fall that I had, and I just am slower than I ever have been before. But I want to still be of service to the community. My garage is open and available, and I want to open, if it's possible, from April through September, the second and fourth Saturdays of the month, to give new entrepreneurs and crafters in town that don't have, you know, a place to display their, their goods and sell them, because show and sell is very important for the craft, the home crafter. And I myself do that, I putter in my workroom and make little lighthouses out of wood that are so big, and little sailing ships, old-time sailing ships, and I sell them occasionally. And I use my time, now that I'm fully retired, for that. But I just can't sort all the toys and tools and, and trinkets and treasures and things that people gave me for five years to resell. And as you well know, we gave all the profits that we got to various causes, churches in town, Habitat for Humanity, the Police Department, the Fire Department, veterans, the ambulance service, a whole bunch of stuff. And we can't do that anymore. So what I'd like to do is get people involved in this, set up their own tables, display their own items from nine until two in the afternoon, and I would do nothing. All I'd do would open the garage and let them go at it, and what I would charge would be five dollars a table space, which I would give to a cause or charity or, or whatever. And what I'm asking the Board is for permission to do this with the proviso that we traffic control and do things right, and maybe get a porta potty so that they wouldn't have to use my bathrooms, and just open it to the general public and open it to anybody, young or old, who wants to display their crafts, whether it's sewing or whether it's wood crafts or whatever it is. Because I have a feeling that there are an awful lot of undercover people who don't have a way of displaying their goods, and it would encourage new crafters. And I, I think it would work, I really do. But I'm waiting for approval.
Yeah, I'm not sure if there's any legalities involved with that, that's like running an ongoing business or something, or...
I think it might be a planning board issue.
Planning board issue, yeah.
I think you might want to talk to the town planner, if I may be so bold.
I haven't done anything other than write this letter.
And I like your idea, if you're gonna have people there, that you have a porta potty and stuff like that.
Oh, yeah.
I think the chief might have to take a look at the traffic, because that's a very, very busy intersection.
I know.
And, and I believe that sales with outdoor display, you, you might have to go through some sort of process with the planning board.
I'm deaf in this ear, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I, sales with outdoor display, like you're describing, you, it might kick in some sort of permitting process with the planning board, so for that, you should probably talk with Jack Hunter, that would be my...
I will.
My suggestion, yeah.
But I wanted to start with you.
Sure, thank you.
And I'm sure Mr. Hunter would be helpful for you.
Oh, yeah, I think so.
Because neighbors would have to be approached as well.
Yeah, I think you need to vet it through the neighbors and everything else to make sure it's not going to become a neighborhood problem, you know what I'm saying? But why don't you start there, Dr. Beveridge, with the planning board, if you run into any problems or issues, there's plenty of people that'll be willing to step forward and help you through the process.
Sure, I'll talk to Mr. Hunter.
Okay?
Yes.
All right, thank you, sir, it's good to see you again.
Yes.
Please take care of yourself.
I will.
Okay? And be careful driving.
I don't drive at night very often.
Let us know when you are.
Call ahead.
Nice to see you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Next up, we have a Board of Selectmen Comment Period, and it's Meadow Brook Way update, meetings with South Shore Housing. I think Mr. Ward's gonna address this.
Is this also where we're supposed to make any comments that we want to make? All right, before I start on the South Shore Housing, I wanted to do kind of an update of folks about the cranberry industry, because I'm the only cranberry grower on the board here. I got a letter from the CMC, which is the Cranberry Marketing Committee, and they're affiliated with USDA, and they have a committee that's nationwide addressing the surplus of cranberries versus the sales of cranberries and how out of balance it is. And, and they write, "In our opinion, as we approach the February two thousand and fourteen, Cranberry Marketing Committee industry is in a crisis. The prices are so depressed that we are definitely in a crisis." We were looking last year at fifteen dollars a barrel, which was below production costs, and my handler said six dollars a barrel by September. So that's six cents a pound for a pound of cranberries. Makes you wonder when you're paying two fifty-nine for twelve ounces, but anyway. And the big problem is, is way overproduction in Quebec, which comes into the United States and also Wisconsin. Massachusetts is not out of normal ranges in terms of production. So I just wanted to make the public aware of what's happening around you. The second thing I, I wanted to address was, this afternoon, I met with South Shore Housing Authority, and with them came the Halkeen Enterprises, which oversees and does the work and, and maintenance and taking care of all the legalities and everything in the South Shore Housing Affordable Complex out back. We have two areas for apartments out there, one is the Carver Housing Authority, and that is roughly, I think around twenty apartments, both for affordable and both for elderly. And, and in that is also included veterans handicapped. South Shore is directly behind the Town Hall, if you drive down the road next to the library, that's on the right, and there's forty units roughly in there, and that's run by South Shore Housing Authority. Now, South Shore Housing Authority, the director talked a little about it today, and so I'm giving you things that he told us, and I say us, it was our Town Administrator, Mr. Malinowski, our Town Assistant Administrator, Elaine Weston, myself, and I can't pronounce the director at South Shore Housing, Carl Nagy Corinchen, and then the woman from Halkeen Enterprises is Megan Tomopoulos.
Tomopoulos.
How do you say it?
Tomopoulos.
Tomo, Tomopoulos, okay. So he, the director at South Shore started the conversation, and he talked about the history of South Shore Housing, which is roughly forty, forty-three years old. Their operation here in Carver is called Meadow Brook, that's been in existence, I think, twenty-five plus years, and it's for affordable housing, for people in affordable situation, elderly, homeless, and Halkeen Enterprises, they took on a couple of years ago to manage the facility, yep, out back, in Meadow Brook, and they, they, Halkeen has the, the attorneys and all the expertise that South Shore couldn't necessarily get into in any depth. So they have the attorneys, they have the specialists, and they run housing up and down the East Coast, literally seven hundred and fifty, eight hundred units. Now, the, South Shore operates the HUD Section Eight, which is assistance to folks that need that. And so, so South Shore, when it came, the HUD program came to Massachusetts, South Shore was one of eight different regional groups to take over the management of it. So South Shore Housing manages the Section Eight under HUD. Their, their programs vary, they have a program that's Home Base for Homeless People on the whole area, there's some, maybe forty towns involved with South Shore Housing. So they're operating in a big area, more than just Plymouth County. And, let's see, Halkeen spoke after the director from South Shore, and she talked about more specifically how you get into one of the apartments, how you apply, and how they try to evaluate people so that they can, if they're the most needy, it generally, for one person, you have to be sixty-two years or older. Their income for one person was under thirty thousand dollars, and thirty percent of their income had to go for the rent of the unit. The unit's roughly a little over a thousand dollars per unit. If they're getting Section Eight, they may be paying two hundred and fifty to three hundred dollars a month, getting help and assistance in that way. The waiting list is two and a half years long, and again, it's people that are, have all kinds of disabilities, so if you, you think you have a special case, there may be several other people with a similar case on that waiting list. The site manager is the regional manager, no, the site manager, then you go to the regional manager, which is the young lady that came today, and then if you have occasion to talk to somebody about her, you talk to her supervisor. There are maintenance concerns that we have had expressed to us as the Board, and so there's one person that's responsible for the maintenance of the seventy units, which include Carver's forty and the Marshfield thirty. So in, in case of many of the, the work projects, they have a third, third company that would be involved, for example, the removal of the snow and, and shoveling and maintaining the paths and things. And they told us that after the first big snowstorm, they had decided that that company hadn't done a good job, and so they hired a second company. So this last storm should have been the second company, which I haven't talked to anybody about how good a job they did yet, but I'm, I'm working on that. As I said before, they hire additional companies to do their maintenance. So in the case of anything that's electrical or plumbing, which requires a permit or a licensed worker, they go outside, so they're outside their organization for that. They have a Board of Directors, we had a representative on that and up till, I think, well, five years ago, and that was Reverend Merritt. Not every town has a representative. Not every town has a representative on their board of directors, because they have like fifteen or sixteen members of that board. Our planning department director, Jack Hunter, has worked with them on several affordable programs. And so he discussed, mentioned that he might be interested in serving on that and the, that board. And the director at South Shore said that their board of directors was considering making, making him an appointment. We became concerned with it because we had a, a person that we needed to work for and help on this whole situation. So I think maybe Mr. Malinowski was there. And I don't know, did I express something wrongly or anything you might add, Mike, that you?
Dick, you did a phenomenal job on what was done there. That was a long meeting, very informative. And it seemed that the management firm was very attentive to your concerns. And I know there's some local issues that we need to address going forward that are not part, that we can't go into in, in a public discussion. But, you know, again, I think that they were willing to see what they could do to work with this, however, they have certain constraints that they have to manage the entire complex for all forty people that are there. And that was really what they were trying to, to accomplish, is that there's, that that is done in a professional manner. Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Dick. Is that all?
Yep, pretty much. That explains a little bit about what, what the two housing authorities are and where they are and how they go about their business.
Through you, Mr. Chair? So where are we with helping the residents that have come to us for help? Are you waiting to hear back from the management company to see what they can do, to assess what the issues were? Where are we at?
We didn't want to get into personalities right here because we didn't want to, first of all, offend somebody or say something we shouldn't legally. You know, I remember Jack, the last meeting, Jack said, "Before we, as a board, take an action on, maybe we should check with the town, town council."
Have you done that?
So we're still in that?
We're, we just met with them this afternoon, Jack. I mean, and I have met with the chairman of the Housing Authority in Carver. I've met with the board, the executive director in the housing for Carver. I've met with the director at South Shore twice. I've been to the Plymouth Housing Court. I've been to, I've been doing quite a bit of running around. So now, we have a couple of avenues that we, we need to recommend to a couple of folks and, I think, discuss in one-on-one with the personality. I don't want to, I don't want to put it into a situation like that.
So we have a plan?
Maybe something, Mike, you have?
We're working on a plan. And, and Mr. Ward, I want to compliment you on the fact you're a very modest person. But you have, on your own, had at least ten meetings or phone calls with different individuals over the last few weeks trying to get resolution to this. And it became apparent, you know, as to how committed you are to fighting resolution. Unfortunately, because of, you know, personalities and individuals, we can't get into any specifics in this meeting. But every selectman that I've spoken to, and I think you, as a, as a board, have spoken that you want to see some resolution. And I think we have eighty percent of the information now that we can move forward with. There's a few more pieces that we need to follow up. But there is a path that's being charted to try to get resolution. Don't want to leave anyone with the impression that we did come to resolution and we're going to fix this. It's just that we know what we need to do next to continue to push positive movement to the satisfaction you're looking for. I'm sorry for being vague, but I can't get into any of the specifics because it relates to individuals.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
As far as having a, a member on that board, I'd like to hold it out for people from the town that might want to serve, and just not arbitrarily pick someone and put them in there. I think it's an important position, and we might have some pretty good people in town that would be interested in sitting on that committee.
Can I give you a little insight into that, Jack? They do, their board of directions, directors at South Shore appoint people to their own board. Okay? So they do the appointment. Now, I asked them, if, if our board wanted to recommend somebody or Mr. Hunter, wouldn't that be a better situation for them? And they, he, he agreed to that.
Yes. Because if you're, you said Reverend Merritt was the?
He used to be, and that was up till five years ago.
And I think maybe he was a member of the Board of Sluckmen at that point when he got appointed. I don't know when he finally got off the board.
No, he was off the board before that, because that was before I came on.
Okay.
That was at least seven years ago.
But I, I think it's important enough that if they'll accept our recommendation, not the, I know, Jack, does a lot of good work for us, but I'd like to hold it out to people.
They did say they're looking for people who have diversity in skills that they, they need. Now, maybe Mike had a better picture of that than I did.
No, that's exactly what they said. And then they went on to say that part of what they're looking on their board to, to meet that diversity is members of, of the units. Right now, they're looking for someone to represent the units. They have people that represent the committees that oversee the units, but not necessarily any residents. That was one of the areas they're looking for. And again, just people that, that represent housing. So, you know, Jack would be a good fit if there was somebody from, living in those forty units that was interested. They would take a look at that as well. Keep in mind, the selectmen do not make the appointments. You may be, recommend someone, but it's up to them to determine who they think is going to be the best fit with their board to maintain diversity, so that they can hear from all sides, if you will.
And yet, I'd like to also mention is, the lady that's in charge of the units over there, Janine, I forget her last name, she serves as the chairman of the Carver, Plimpton Triad Committee. And she's been very successful doing it. She's done it for maybe eight years since it started, so. She works directly for that organization.
She's the, oh, for South, South Shore?
Yeah, and she's in charge of that, those units over there. So, you know, they are a good organization that has, you know, members of their, their company involved in the community.
Set? Yep. We've changed, kind of changed the, the way the agenda is being put out now, so bear with us as we try to get used to it. Ellen, did you have anything you want to say this time?
Also?
Sarah?
Oh, real, real quick, I promise. On Saturday, just an announcement, on Saturday, February eighth at three P.M., at the Frosty Dog in North Carver, there's going to be a fundraiser for the Young People's Alliance of Carver that you just saw a few minutes ago, commonly called Y-PAC. It will feature Wayne Martin, puppeteer, with George Lake, magician, and a clown, Donna Lawrence. All three of these individuals retired and live here in Carver. So we have some, obviously, real talent here. Wayne Martin has performed with the Muppets. So, and I've heard he's really good. The tickets are five dollars for children, ten dollars for adults, and a family limit of forty dollars. So again, it's Saturday, it's February eighth at three P.M. at the Frosty Dog. And that's it.
Thank you. Jack?
I have nothing to say, I was just going to ask Sarah, you mean to say that we have clowns living in this town?
Yes, apparently.
I think some of them work for Ringling Brothers, Bonham and Bailey. Well, I was going to say, don't forget Valentine's Day is coming. I think we still have one more meeting before that. Never too early to remind everybody. Don't forget, like I do last minute every year and, you know, running through the, running through the mall. So, all right, let's move into the town administrator update.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Let me start with the financial updates. We've just received last week the governor's budget. And in that, it shows that Carver is going to receive, by his estimates, about fifty thousand dollars in new state aid. That is, is a small amount, a small increase. Last year, we received a hundred thousand dollars of, of an increase from the state aid. In addition to that, looking at our local new growth, we're looking at about two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in new growth. That is smaller than last year. Last year, I believe, it was around four hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. The two twenty-five may grow a little bit, but that's what the initial, initial forecast is. So that's what we're looking at in new revenue. Those are two of the three sources of new revenue. The third source of new revenue is local receipts, ambulance fees, building permits. It's not anticipated that those will significantly change in any fashion. Obviously, that'll, we also get the prop two and a half, two and a half percent over what last year's levy is. Having said all that, it looks like this year's budget is going to be very tight to, to accomplish everything that's been put together as far as contractual obligations and other needs that the community has. On the expense side, a couple of things worth to keep in mind. One is that with the North Carver Water District is, the town is going to have to start to subsidize out of operating budget for a period of time, that project. There was an extensive meeting last week with the consultants and all the key finance department heads in Carver, looking over the analysis that was done for that. There's going to be another meeting tomorrow, and we're working to refine the pro forma for that project so that we can get agreement between the assessor, the planner, and the accountant on what the projection should be and the assumptions in that. But I just want to make you aware that there will be some additional cost in that. Also tied into the financial update, prior to this last storm that we had last Wednesday, we have exceeded our snow budget allotment by about eight, oh, eight to nine thousand dollars. So that was before the storm. So keep in mind that that account is going to run into a deficit this year. Given that our revenue forecast right now are looking, you know, somewhat bleak, we're going to be looking at, and I had a department head meeting this morning, looking to determine where there may be some duplication of services that are provided in the town and what potential cost savings can be done with those duplications of services. On top of that, we always have to be aware of OPED costs, and those continue to rise until we're able to put together a plan for that. That all being said, is, I put together a financial planning advisory group to the town administrator that is going to look at our financial forecast. Working with Meg, we're going to, to develop a, an extensive financial forecast that'll show what our known assumptions are going forward in, in the future years. So we can evaluate the impacts of certain initiatives that need to be done. And in order to, with constant growth of the community, where are we going to have some additional funding gaps? And this forecasting tool will allow us to identify those. Also, this committee is going to assist me in looking at the short and long-term revenue projections, use of our reserves, allocation of resources. And we'll also start to have them advise me on developing some policies for free cash stabilization, reserves, debt limits, and the normal things that we need to have policies forward. Why that's so important is this town is going to have to be in a position in the near future with the new fire station, some improvements to the elementary school and something with the police station that we are going to have to be borrowing some money. In doing so, we're going to have to work with our bond rating agency, Standard and Poor's, and, and try to sell ourselves as we can, we have a good financial management team in place, we have good policies and procedures in place, those have been adopted by the board of selectmen in town meeting, and we are a good financial risk for you to loan your money to. And therefore, the better risk we are, the higher our bond rating is, which means the lower our cost is to borrowing. So if we're going to have to borrow a lot of money, we want to have the best rating we can. So these are all the steps that are needed to, to make that happen. Now, because this is an advisory committee to myself, and this committee doesn't have any authority but to advise me, who will release the budget, and then you guys will start to review that, as well as the finance committee, et cetera, is what I'm going to put on the committee is the following positions. From the elected officials, the chairman of the board of selectmen and the chairman of the school committee, or his or her designee. From the committees, then the finance committees, from the finance committee, I'm going to put on the chair of the finance committee and the vice chair of the finance committee. The same thing for the capital outlet committee, is the chair and the vice chair of the capital outlet committee. And then this will all be supported by the superintendent, myself, the school business agent, and the town accountant. And I'm hoping to get our first meeting started within the next two weeks. Time is getting very tight with the budget process right now. But these are the necessary steps we need to do. And I'm not looking at this for the short term, as how do I get a budget out in, in June? I know we have to get a budget approved in June, but I'm also focused on where are we going to be with the bond rating agency? So I'm being more deliberate in making sure that all our steps are, are addressed, so that we can, again, have our best foot forward as we go into the, into the, the market to borrow funds. So that's where we stand with the financial update and the financial planning advisory committee. Our audit, oh, and also the finance committee is going to be meeting on Monday, and I'm going to be attending their meeting. Our audit is due within the next week or so. And I'm anticipating that based upon the auditor's availability, that we'll either have them come in and do a presentation with Powers and Sullivan, either the second meeting in February or the first meeting in March, just to give us time to review it. You know, once I get a draft, I have to take a quick review of it, make sure there's no, you know, glaring errors. Then they'll certify it, then I'll give it to the board and to the finance committees, give everybody some time to read it, and then we'll have them come in and do their presentation. I have no idea what it's going to say. I haven't had direct conversations with any management issues that they may have found. So I'm, I'm, I'm waiting with bated breath.
Typically, we have an exit conference. Are you going to have one of those before you have them do the presentation?
Well, the, I would look at the exit conference as the presentation, is that we'll have an internal staff review, just to make sure that there are no issues that, you know, they may have done.
Basically, that's what he does. He'll come down and have an internal review with you, and then he could do, just in case there are any glaring errors. Just a suggestion, that's what we used to do in the past.
And we will have those conversations. I think it's more important to have them sitting at this table.
Oh, absolutely.
In front of you with the documents and identify what they found. And, you know, some of the things where, that they may have identified, may have already been resolved. Some may yet to be resolved. That's what we'll find out in the management letter. So that's the timetable that I'm looking at for that at this point. The next item is that I would need to, to get some approval from you as requested by the state. As you know, about two years ago, the state came down and DOR did a financial management review. What they offer is they come back and they do an update on that, you know, after a year or two, to give the community some time to do it. They wouldn't be able to get here based upon their schedule into the fall. But, and I've already asked them to put us on the list in anticipation that that's what you want. But as part of the documentation is that they also want to vote of the board of selectmen, requesting them to come back and to do an updated request. Now, based upon what happens with the audit in Powers and Sullivan, I may ask them to do some additional work on small topics. They're not going to come in and do a full review, but if there's some small items that come out, they may, they may be willing to look at those. They're also coming down, they were going to come down during the snowstorm to actually start to do a review on the North Carver Watershed District. But due to the snowstorm, they have to reschedule that, I think, to February sixth, I think is where they're coming down to do that. So there is going to be another element that they're going to do just on that project. So, again, on this one, with, with your concurrence, I would need someone to make a motion and authorize that we're requesting them to come down and do an update on the financial management review they did in two thousand eleven, I think it's two thousand eleven.
Make a, make a motion that we request DOR to follow up on that audit?
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. Any further comments, questions?
Based on an anticipated ethics filing against me, I'm going to recuse myself.
The what? I didn't hear you.
Based on an anticipated ethics complaint against me, I'm going to recuse myself just to protect my good name.
Okay. Sarah, anything? Okay. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Okay. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 The next item I have listed is an I T audit slash assessment. And to my first department head meeting, one of the key things that unanimously all the departments raised was the lack of technology in town hall in some of the antiquated computers and software and lack of Wi-Fi in town hall to do some of the work that they feel they could be more efficient in doing. I've had several conversations with the superintendent on this. As you've seen, I spent a lot of time with the superintendent lately. And last year, they went through an extensive audit process. Network performance assessment, they looked at all their wireless, they looked at their servers, and they hired a company to come in and do that. Now, as part of their project, they did look at a couple of the town components, but it was kinda spotty on the town side, particularly where they were, the school was related to this. So what I'm looking to do is actually to come in and complete the town side of that report so that if, we're comparing apples and oranges right now is where we are because they're ahead of us and they know what they need, and they've funded what they need, and they've implemented most of that stuff. We're, I don't wanna say light years behind them, but the town side is behind them. In order to improve our efficiency in town, we need to at least get on the same plane as those. But to identify what we need to do is that I wanna come in and, you know, do a comprehensive review on what the town side is, do an inventory, do the assessments, and then identify, compare and contrast what the school has, look at what our needs are, and then put together a plan to fund our needs so that we can get the capital appropriations we need to catch up for that. So that's what I'm looking to do. What's a little confusing, and I will say this i- in the Town Administrator Act, is what authority I have to enter into contracts? Is there a dollar limit as to the contracts that have to come in front of the board? Where do you guys draw the line? Because the bylaws are kind of absent on that.
You have an appropriation that you're gonna draw from?
Well, on this right now, I've got one of two things. One is I'm going to scrub the town administrator's budget and see if there's any money in here. The number I'm looking for is up to ten thousand, but probably mostly five thousand. If I can't scrub something out of the town manager's budget, I'm sorry, town administrator's budget, then I talked to Jack Cotter today. Cotter, Cot-?
Cotter.
Cotter, Cotter. And making a reserve request to the, to the finance committee. I wanna do that in last resort, but I wanna move this piece forward. So that's how I'd answer your question.
They do have some additional funding in their budget for doing audits, and I don't know if that would fall within, in their audit function that they were looking for. But they, I forget what it was. Was it twenty-five thousand we gave them?
Twenty-five thousand we gave them, yeah.
So you could talk to John about that.
All right. So short of the funding source, whether I'm able to scrub it out of my budget, because it's, my position's only been filled half a year, plus the time Jim Purcell was here, so there may be some money in there, or whether I go to one of the two sources in the finance committee, I'm just looking for your support in doing this.
I know where he can get nine hundred dollars of that. But I'll entertain a motion on that.
Make a motion that we authorize the town administrator to move forward with his project as described.
I T assessment, audit?
I T assessment.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Questions, comments, concerns, recommendations?
No, we need it.
Yeah.
There's no question about it.
Yeah, we gotta update things.
You know, at least if we get an idea of where we need to go, he can develop a plan, and we can try to reach that, whether we attain it all at once or we have to do it incrementally.
Right.
At least we're moving forward.
We need to know what road we're going on.
Right.
Can I ask one question? So you're gonna look at all the needs at town hall?
Yes.
Does that also include what my wish list was in interviewing you, that we have maybe some computers, you know, iPads or whatever?
We will look at that. We will look at phone systems as well.
All is paper.
And I'll give you an example.
And I love paper.
The police department needs a new server. It needs some new equipment. The library needs some new equipment, plus it needs a new phone system. I wanna make sure all the phone systems can talk to one another. And where we can buy one system so we can have one technician that can manage all of them saves us money versus the way our town buildings have been built. Each building has a separate fire alarm panel. Company A can only work on Company's A product. Company B can only work on Company B's product. So we have to call each one of them out for those inspections versus having one to do all of them. I don't want that in I T. That's not what we need. That's not where the technology is. But that's what we have today, and we have to get on one system.
We need to bring the Board of Selectmen into the twenty-first century too.
We can do that as well.
We agree. So I get a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I'm gonna recuse myself, Michelle.
Okay, and we have one recusal. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The next item is the M S B A update on the elementary school. I think at the last meeting, I updated that we had been to Boston. Tomorrow, they're having their monthly meeting, I'm sorry, quarterly meeting. And Carver is on the list for approval to receive, to be invited to apply based upon our notice of interest that the superintendent put in for Carver. So based upon a positive outcome tomorrow, then we will be, we will be having a conference call with M S B A on Friday. There's been a lot of work by staff over the last week and a half with the land use departments, conservation, planning, and Board of Health, myself and the superintendent, to explore the feasibility of some of the other sites in town, primarily the high school. All of that information has been forwarded to the Collins Center, so they are doing their objective review. I suspect it's gonna be a few more weeks before the Collins Center comes back with its report. But as I've mentioned before, we are looking at not only the rehab of the existing site, but also looking at an alternative site. So we will be exploring, you know, more than one option through this process.
What time is that phone call gonna take place, Mike, and where?
Uh, we don't have the time set up. It'll be a conference call with the superintendent, myself, and the M S B A staff to go over that.
Would you let us know?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you. Okay.
Next item is, at our last meeting, you had requested an update on funds to the Carver Council on Aging and also the Friends of the Council on Aging. I have a letter here from the director. And over the last seven months, the Council on Aging has collected about nine hundred and fifty-one dollars and then has been deposited into the Friends of Carver Council on Aging. On a go-forward basis, we're going to actually have turnover records that are gonna be in more detail than they are right now just to provide better accountability, not that I see any issues because, again, we're looking at about, you know, a hundred and forty dollars per month. But we're gonna work on making better, installing better cash management policies on that. And in the last page, as you see, what has been taken in for senior meals sold on a weekly basis, which totals seven thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars, and that's from July first to present. So this is, you know, an update of where we are. And Carol has, again, created these forms just to provide for some better accountability going forward. Not that I see a problem, but it's just that we're improving that going forward.
Can I say something? When you look at this, basically, you want your departments to turn over their deposits, ideally on a daily basis, but definitely by a weekly basis. And this doesn't even meet the weekly basis. This is maybe two times a month.
Uh-huh.
So maybe you can, with part of your financial policies and stuff, you can incorporate that into it.
Absolutely. That's, that's one of the things that Meg has brought to my attention, that we need to have more frequent turnovers. And that's just good of, good management policy to do that. So we will be putting those into effect going forward as well.
Question on this, the Friends on the Council on Aging. It's a separate entity from the Council on Agents.
Correct. It's a nonprofit five oh one C three committee that we as a town have no say on whatsoever. So what they do with their money is up to them because they're an independent body. This was money that was collected within a town facility. And so that's why I was able to, they were able to provide this to me at fundraising events they do when they sell soda and stuff like that at some of the meals.
It has been an improvement because up until, like, three years ago, a lot more money went into the Friends of the Council on Aging and didn't go into the town. Specifically, a lot of the meals and a lot of the meals at the Nutrition Center and monies that were paid for the bus. But we changed all that. We opened up revolving accounts. But my concern was I didn't see any, any sort of account called donations for the Council on Aging, not the Friends of the Council on Aging, not the Council on Aging itself. Because I do know from time to time that people make donations to the Council on Aging. So maybe you could look at establishing that.
Okay. We can take a look at that.
Should we presume that this money that they raised there, since that name is the Friends on the Council on Aging, is donated to the Council on Aging?
Yes, it is. Yeah. So what they would have is a raffle.
Yeah.
I think is one of the things that they have. So the money from the raffle then would go into the Friends of the Council on Aging.
I go there from time to time when I have those fundraisers. And they do have a raffle at every one, but they also sell soda.
Right.
And they put that money on apparently.
What I'm saying is, does that money go to the Council on Aging?
No, that goes to the Friends.
But the money that the Friends get and collect solely goes to the Council on Aging, necessary items.
So they're depositing this money into the Friends' Council on Aging account who is then depositing it into the Council on Aging account?
Oh, well, they're buying things or they're providing funding for something.
If they need a machine, copy machine, something small or like that, then they'll purchase it for the Council.
Like John did tonight.
Are we responsible for any of their activity on that since they're raising funds on our?
For the Friends, no.
Okay.
For the Friends, no.
And it looks like the transactions by the Council itself are like twice a month. If every deposit here, transaction date is like twice a month.
That's the sporadic deposits they're making.
Yeah, but at least they're not.
They should make a separate deposit just for the meals that they sell for the fundraiser.
Yeah, what you're seeing is, and I'll give you an example, is that you're seeing two deposits made on the same day. So they may go every two weeks, but they, they provide each week as a separate deposit. But you're seeing two on the same day. That's what you're seeing here. And the better thing is to do it every week.
Every week or?
Or even sooner, depending upon the value of what you have.
Maybe you can put a certain, if they have a certain amount, they have to make a deposit. So they're not, you know, they don't have a thousand dollars in cash on hand. Because basically, it's all cash. You don't wanna, unless they have some sort of safe or something down there that they can put it in.
Yes. And in my review of this, I've seen nothing inappropriate. This all seems all above board. No one's doing anything wrong. It's just that we wanna just create better accounting records going forward.
Tighten up the controls, that's all.
Makes it more transparent and everything, so there's no questions.
Exactly.
Absolutely.
Okay. And the next item, at the last meeting, there was a question on the water truck being parked at town hall and never moving. The truck has moved. And a couple of comments on that. It was jointly funded through three different sources. Fifteen percent was from the town. It is under contract with the management company. They have access to the truck. They, they tend to use it a couple hours a day, and they always park it back in the same spot. But they're now gonna be keeping the truck stored at the D P W maintenance facility. So it's in a more secured area. But it is under contract for the Small Water Company, I believe it is. Small Water Systems to use as part of that contract. And they are required to do some of the plowing up around all of the wells in town.
When I saw a water truck parked at town hall, I thought maybe we had a problem with some wells. And the national guard tanker was out there.
No, we didn't, we didn't have that.
Not yet.
So again, that was a question that came up from the public at the last meeting.
Okay.
Next item is scheduling the facilitator with the Board of Selectmen. I'm working with Jeff Nutting and trying to find some availability. Right now, we're looking at either the week of February seventeenth. And I wanted to just poll the board is, do you have any blackout dates during that time? It is vacation week?
I was just gonna say that.
Yeah. Yeah, I know.
You got young kids.
I know.
What do you wanna do with that?
Well, that's, if I have to be here, that will make it work.
Why don't we make it other than the vacation week then?
And then the other week is the first week in March. And I know, Dick, you're out the fourteenth or fifteenth of March.
Fifteenth of March is my only holdup date.
Anyone have any issues on the first week in March?
I, would it be a night meeting?
Um, I would assume so, yes.
So I wouldn't be able to make the first Wednesday in March?
Yeah, that's a non-Selectmen's meeting week.
Correct. I think we try to do it on the Tuesday, but.
Yeah, whatever he has.
Yes. A couple of the updates before we get to the, to the last item is the town clerk has worked with the Office of Campaign and Political Finance. They're gonna be doing a campaign finance seminar on Tuesday, April first, at six P M. No, this is not a joke. This is literally gonna happen on Tuesday, April first. So on April Fool's Day, you, you can go to Campaign's Finance Seminar by the state officials. Next item I wanna bring to your attention is that the Fire Department, through a hundred and sixteen thousand dollar grant, has received seven pallets of new structural fire hose. And those are gonna be disseminated to all of their departments, to the three stations. And again, that's a hundred and sixteen thousand dollar grant that the town didn't have to pay for. In addition, their recruits are going to start this Saturday. And I may even stop by and see what's going on. Also, the police department has been very proactive in, in trying to help stem the drug issues in town. There were two major arrests that happened in busts in coordinating with other towns and also the sheriffs, where they were able to arrest several people with an intent to distribute both heroin and cocaine. And in addition to that, the chief has established a dedicated anonymous tip line that people can call in and actually leave information for the police to investigate. They can leave their name and callback number if they want, but it is designed as an anonymous tip line for them to receive information around town.
Do you wanna give them that number?
Uh, yes. It is five oh eight, eight six six, two thousand, extension nine. And Chief, do you have anything you wanna say on that? Not to put you on the spot, but I just did.
No, just to say that.
Grab the microphone, Chief.
Just to say that we are trying to do the best we can to alleviate a drug problem with the resources we have. And one of the biggest helps to that is information from the public, be it anonymous or, or with name and phone number. With that information, we can better guide and direct the ongoing investigations. And it's, it really is proving very valuable. Just this Sunday, we had an investigation went on. And based on information that we already had about somebody in the investigation, that coupled with what we learned that night, provided information for a search warrant, and gotten another person arrested. So your information does help. One of the things that we see a lot is people will provide information and then feel that nothing happened with it. And I want you to understand that just because you tell us something's happening today and there's not a SWAT team kicking the door in the next day, it doesn't mean that the information wasn't useful. It just means that we have to put a lot more into that investigation. But it's an excellent way for us to, to guide and direct limited resources to where they're best needed to, to, to take a hit on the crime. We can't, we know a lot of what's going on, and we need to focus the limited resources we have on taking them out from the highest priority down, the worst offenders down. And we're doing that. But your help is greatly appreciated. The new tip line will help us to receive information on that. We've already got several tips into that line. And we will be moving to do the same thing with the website so you can submit tips via email if you'd like. But that's gonna take a little bit more. So thank you for giving me the chance to speak.
In every, every little bit of information counts. People should understand that. There's no bit of information that's too trivial.
Absolutely.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Mark, if, if, if someone isn't watching this Board of Selectmen's meeting, because I know everybody does, but just in case, there's one out there. If they, if somebody calls the police station, will it mention the anonymous tip line there?
Yes, it does. When you listen to the recordings you come in, it'll give you several options on how to get to records or to my office. And the last one is number nine for the, for the tip line.
And have we spoken to the paper or the news media to let them know to put it out in the paper?
Yes, I did issue a press release this weekend on it. And we'll be working to do, to get the word out some more. We're also considering doing a, like, five hours on a Facebook page because it seems to be a good way to get stuff out to people.
Where's W A T D?
I think they, they got it.
When we need them.
Thank you very much for.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Thanks, Chief.
Um, Mr. Chairman, the last one more item is that the mobilizing the Community Task Force is going to be meeting on February fourth at six thirty over at the Middle High School Library as another venue to start to, to look at this pervasive drug issue as well.
I'm sure there's plenty of parents out there that are extremely interested in this or should be anyways. Thank you.
There was one more item on there.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm looking on that. Because I gotta keep track of dates. Yeah, let me do that right now. Um, Mr. Chairman, the last item that I have on the Town Administrator Updates is the Borrego Solar Project. And I'm going to pass out right now just a summary. Uh, request for a stay from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Land Court, Department of Trial Court that just came out the other day on this case. But what I wanted to do is, this is a very complicated and emotional case with many that revolves around land use rights, zoning, and is now tied into litigation. So I didn't attend the executive session the Board of Selectmen had. So I can actually speak a little bit differently than each one of you can because you have to maintain the privileged component until this issue has been resolved. And it's still a pending case right now. I have met with Town Council, with Jack Hunter, with many to go over the history of, of this project. And what I want to address is that there is going to be an opportunity for additional public hearing down the road. But let me take a moment and just kind of put everything back on the same page so that I can address some of the issues that, that have been laid out there. Right now, the, there is no, when this project was proposed, there were no regulations in the town for solar fields. There were none at that time. So as being a property owner, a property owner has certain land rights vested in them based upon constitutional law that they can develop their property within the rules and regulations of a community. As a result of that, there's also a state statute, Chapter forty A, Section three, that allows for solar energy systems to be built, provided that they are, they, except where they impact the public health, safety, and welfare. After this project was submitted, the town then actually approved a zoning bylaw to regulate where solar fields were. And in that regulation, it included a minimum setback of two hundred feet. This project, when originally proposed, the original proposal for this project was four thousand solar panels with a fifty-foot buffer around it. Again, after it was proposed, the town then passed regulations that made it more restrictive than what it was built at. The applicant received a building permit and that was appealed to the Z B A. There was a time period where the building permit was actually revoked by the Building Inspector based upon new information that he received from Town Council. This appeal then went to the land court. As part of being in the land court, the owner of the property decided to come back and propose a modification to his project. That modification was made to be consistent with the new zoning bylaw for solar fields. And it was also even more restrictive than that in some of the things that they've done. So they asked the Planning Board to come back and do a minor modification to reduce the size of their project. A minor modification, you're allowed to do without doing letters to every individual household. You just have to publicize the meeting as a normal notice because technically, the project is going to be downsized. In downsizing, and again, they reduced the overs, the size of the project by thirty percent. They increased the buffer to two hundred feet to be consistent with the new zoning bylaws. And they agreed to install an earth berm with, I believe it's Abervites or some type of, of tree species to further block the review beyond the four, the two hundred feet that was in the new plan. The parties met with the court back in, in December and had a, a conference call with the judge on January twenty second. As part of that piece, the, by, by refiling for the plan, the Planning Board was in a position where they had already approved Project X. And now this project was going to be smaller than X. Again, the minor modification, and they approved that. Once that amended plan has been filed with the town clerk, and it may have been filed already with all the signatures, then the, the applicant can go then request a building permit for that. Once he receives that building permit, then the abutters have thirty days to file an appeal. Once they file that appeal on the project, it then opens up another public hearing where all the residents, and this will be a fully advertised and notice public hearing for all the abutters to attend and to have the full-blown presentation on what this smaller project is compared to the original project. Now, again, this ties into a lot of litigation. But all of the appropriate legal steps were followed in the downsizing of this project. Could there have been some better notice? There can always be better notice. Should there have been some better notice? Probably there should have been. However, all of the requirements were followed and because this was under legal review, it, it just required a different level of, of oversight from Town Council, making sure that all those appropriate steps were followed. So again, the net of this is that the applicant reduced its project based upon the new bylaws that the town has accepted as being a standard that it wants for its entire town. The project meets that. The applicants can file an appeal once the, the building permit has been issued. And then that starts the process over for a new public hearing with the Z B A. That's about all we can do at this point is to let it follow its natural course. And I know some people want to discuss this in a lot more detail and understand how it got from point A to point B or Z, but it's been following this, this legal process. And we have to let it run its course. And the next public hearing scheduled for this will be if and when the abutters file an appeal. And at this point, that's all we can do.
Okay. I know that there are a number of people here tonight specifically about that issue. Is there one spokesman that would like to ask some questions? Comments? What's that?
I think they all have some questions.
Okay, then we'll wait till the citizens' participation part of it and we'll adhere to those guidelines then, okay? And it'll be three minutes. We've got to keep it civil and we're not going to be repetitious, okay?
I would like that.
Up to the microphone. Tell everybody who you are, James.
James O'Brien, Four Great Battle Drive Carver. I'll, I'll try to be brief because I know a lot of people do want to make comments. And I, I, you know, listened to your soliloquy of the, what happened. But my concern and my request was more near your end question where, should we have done more? Knowing the circumstances in this case, it's, it's very clear more should have been done to find out what the residents felt about this. Because if you actually read the bylaw, there's, there's resident concern in the bylaw about what the, the decision is able or not able to do. I was also a member of the Solar Bylaw Committee in helping design that. And there was an original outlay map that was different and would not have allowed that in this area. But that was overruled and motioned out during a town meeting. It was a unanimous agreement by the Bylaw Committee. My question to you would really be that you said that you've spoken to so many people about this, but never once has anybody spoken to anyone in my neighborhood about this at all. And we left the meeting knowing that the Board of Selectmen, the Building Inspector, and the Z B A went and supported the cease and desist and went to court. So our, our town representative, our legal counsel, went to court with all of that ammunition where in a land court, it's going to be very hard for a court to overrule all of those local municipalities agreeing on something and yet negotiated a deal that does not meet the bylaw requirements. And if you like, we could describe and discuss the bylaw requirements along with Mr. Dubowski, who is also the probably largest crafter of that document, and explain why it does not meet the bylaw requirements. So I guess my question to you is, you say that you've spoken to so many about it, but how come nobody did reach out to us? How come there was no reach out to find out about this?
Well, what I can say at this point is this is, as I began, and this is still a legal matter. And the people that I reached out were the people that were involved in the permitting process. The public comment was already on record as to what occurred. The land court, as my understanding, doesn't really review what public comments are. They look at facts of law. And when they were reviewing the facts of law in the case that was put forward, that's, that's what they make their decisions upon. You know, as I said, there should have, you know, should there have been more? Yeah, I think there should have been. But the fact is that we now have to go forward and there is an opportunity for a full-blown public hearing coming up with the next Z B A process. And that's, that's the process. So we have to stand by the process based upon how these projects go forward.
My neighborhood has the same land rights that the owner that owns that land has. And I understand what you're saying where, where you feel that, that they have a right to do what they did. But we also have a right to be represented. And that isn't what's been happening. And, and to this board, through you, Mr. Chair, I'd like to say honestly, and, and I will end on this, in, in my opinion, that if our legal counsel is going to be this wishy-washy with the support that they have, that maybe this town should start looking at finding a new one. Because there's a lot out there that will really defend the residents of this town and what's right. My neighbors should not have to pay the price for a mistake that was made by boards in this town. And because we want to stave off a financial debt that we might have to pay through legal court, my neighbors are going to have to suffer through that. That does not meet the bylaw requirements and is not appropriate. And every board that faced this, besides the Planning Board in this town, supported going against this. And then like that, it changed. You may say that's legally right or wrong, but that's morally wrong.
Mr. Milonowski has come into this after the fact.
Well, Mr. O'Donnell, I understand that.
But he's doing, he's doing his best to try and decipher the entire issue and deal with all the ramifications and the legality. So I mean, I understand you're angry, but you know, he's not the person to be taking it out on, okay?
I, I, I agree. I apologize then. But, but I do still stand by those statements that everybody in this town knew the controversy that was faced with this issue and that the abutters should have been notified of what was going on directly, regardless of legal obligation.
And nobody disagrees with you.
Thank you.
How sensitive the issue is, okay?
Thank you.
You should have been notified. And as Mr. Milonowski explained, unfortunately, the Board of Selectmen are bound by executive session. We can't go into detail at this point in time about what our discussions were. But, you know, the process is far from over. So you, people need to stay vigilant and make sure that you stay on top of this. You know, I'm not, I'm not telling you to sit back and relax and, and take it for granted or take it, take it easy. But there's a, there's a lot of things at play here, so. Don't give up. Okay, if other residents want to address that and have some different things that they would like to add to the entire equation, we can do that during citizens' participation. And until then, we have licenses and.
Best buddies.
Best buddies. Okay, Best Buddies Challenge, Saturday, May thirty first. This is an annual event. And enjoyable one. You may even get a chance to see Tom Brady ride through.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further comments, concerns, questions, recommendations? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, unanimous. Sampson's Pond, Cape Cod Bass, on July twentieth, two thousand and fourteen, Sunday. There'll be about twenty vehicles down there. Once again, this is the same crew that shows up annually, conduct their tournament. We've never had any issues or problems, to my knowledge. Chief, can you recall anything, Chief? Doofly?
No.
Thank you.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, unanimous. Shertlift Park for Farmers Market, Sundays, June fifteenth through October twenty sixth, eleven A M. to five P M. And again, this is an annual ritual that we have and people enjoy very much.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion and I have a second. Any further comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed.
Trying to keep Michael on the schedule.
Genanamous. I did see your lips move, right, Ellen?
They did.
Okay. All right, minutes, January seventh and the fourteenth.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Comments, questions?
One comment is typographical error on the top of each one of them, but that can be corrected. Doesn't have to be amended.
Okay, and you will take that up with Michelle or?
I already did.
Any other comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, unanimous. Mr. Milonowski, were there any topics that weren't reasonably expected or anticipated?
I will say the town clerk loves that statement on the agenda, so we're consistent with the open meeting law.
Okay.
But I have none.
Nothing at this time, okay? The next Board of Selectmen meeting, everybody, is February eleventh, two thousand and fourteen, seven P M. Town Hall. I'd like to see as many of you come out as possible and participate and, you know, give us some ideas. Things you'd like to see done, changes. All right, next up is the public comment period, okay? And I see some hands up. And I think what we'll do is we'll go with Mr. Dubowski and we'll finish the theme on the solar project. And Eric?
Good afternoon.
Good to see you again.
Good evening, everyone. Eric Dubowski, Three Leland Way. First thing I'd like to address was the comment that Mr. Milonowski made about the attempt to meet the bylaw with the minor modification. Want to point out for the record that it doesn't come close to meeting the bylaw. It's supposed to have two hundred-foot setbacks all around. It has two hundred-foot setbacks from three homes. It has screening for, for parts of those three homes. It doesn't come close to meeting the bylaw. What's going on here is absolutely disgusting, as far as I'm concerned. We have something that doesn't meet the bylaws before or after. Town Council agreed to that fact. The Z B A upheld that, that, that opinion. And we have something that's thrown out of the, of the town and into the courts. Now, all of a sudden, it's in the courts. They decide they're going to come back with something else that doesn't meet the old or the new bylaws, and they're going to try it again. And at this point, we're being told that our only recourse is to go and dig it into our pockets, spend more money to fight this thing. At what point is the town going to take our, take our case here? Everyone I've talked to works in the, that works in the legal department elsewhere, that works in Planning Boards, Z B As, and other towns. At this point, we should have had a very good case here. The Z B A was on our side with the objections from the welfare perspective. The courts uphold that. Why is this not going on? It shouldn't be coming back to the citizens to fight this again. The town should be doing a lot more than they are at this point. To tell us that the only recourse is for us to pay for another appeal, that's not right.
Well, what I can say, Eric, is I would ask you to submit all those reasons.
I've been doing just that to the Building Inspector.
Right. To give it to Mr. Milonowski, though. The Building Inspector works for him, okay? And, and, and Mike is the, he's the hub of all the activity here at Town Hall, so. He answers for all his department heads and everything else. So he's the gentleman that you want to deal with. You and James and the rest of your group, put your heads together and come up with the reasons why it violates the bylaw and some of the other things that you just mentioned, okay?
Okay.
And give those to Mr. Milonowski, please, okay?
Mr. Milonowski, a business card with my email in the back. If you can reach out to me, I'll.
Great, and I'd like to know about the other towns you said that, that feel that we have a strong case in this for their planning boards because that would help as well.
because that would help as well as to who they are.
Anything you can give us, Eric, okay? Anything and everything. James, still, yeah.
Is it going to be worth it, though, is my question? I mean, at this point, we're already told that there's nothing we can do besides appeal again on our own dime.
Well, we'll see what we can do. We'll do our best.
Doesn't seem like that's been happening to date, so I have my doubts about that. Thank you.
All right. Who else? Anybody else on that project? Come on, Michelle. Let everybody know who you are.
Michelle Cohen, 3 Leland Way. First of all, I kind of feel like this is candid camera or something. I'm waiting for someone to come through and tell us that we're just joking, this is really going to court. You guys don't have to do anything else, because we've been fighting for two and a half years. And I'm just wondering, you said that the building permit had a cease and desist order. They applied for a minor modification. How can they apply for a minor modification on a plan that has a cease and desist order?
I didn't mention cease and desist order in my presentation. What I mentioned was that they came back and they have amended their original project, which they can do. And that's what they've done. It's called a minor modification. It's allowed by law for them to do that.
But if there's not a project with a permit on it, how can they modify it?
The permit is still valid. When it's under appeal, it's still valid.
When did it?
They're still grandfathered from the date they submitted that project.
Even with the cease and desist?
Even with the cease and desist.
Okay. My biggest thing is, you all, as a board, have been preaching about transparency and open government and everything like that. And I understand that you guys had an executive session, but at the same time, everyone on your board, everyone on every other board, including planning and Jack Hunter, knew how touchy this subject was. And Mr. Milonowski, yes, he said that, should we have done something? Yes. Well, that's what we've been hearing the whole time. Should we have done something? Probably, but we didn't. And this is getting to the point, it's two and a half years of our lives that we've had to pull out of our pockets to fight the town that we live in about a project that should never have been approved in the first place. And I realize that the planning board is an elected board, and if we want change, that we need to make the change ourselves. But at the same time, we need help from the town again, because we've been pulling money out of our pockets left and right to fund things, whether it be a lawyer to go with us to the ZBA, whether it be to appeal to the ZBA. We just can't fund it anymore. It's not fair to the residents to have to keep funding something that shouldn't be on our backs alone.
Somebody else on the solar project? Yes, ma'am.
Can I actually just ask Mr. Tabolski a follow-up to Stephen's?
Why don't you let her speak, Eric, and grab Mr. Milonowski at the end of the meeting, okay?
I'm Chris McGurthy, and I live at 11 Captain Hall Road in Middleburg. And I just want to know who exactly is going to be held accountable for this. Because like Michelle said, we've been doing this for two and a half years. We come before every board we're supposed to come to. We introduce ourselves. We tell our personal stories. We tell why this isn't right. We went before the ZBA. They agreed with us. They said it didn't belong there. And then we turn around and we find out through word of mouth from somebody on Facebook that you guys have all been meeting again, and now it's back on the board. And now you tell us to give him all of our information. Is he going to be the one that's held accountable?
I'm the one that's held accountable.
We've heard that for so long, though. And everybody says, no, it was the planning board. No, it was this board. Well, you have to go to this board now. Well, they approved it, so now we have to do it. So you have the power to put a stop to this.
No, I don't have the power. You said who's accountable. I'm the one that's accountable.
So who has the power to put a stop to it?
The courts.
Which is going to be more money out of our pocket, because you've backtracked on what the ZBA approved or what they ruled on.
The Board of Selectmen hasn't done anything yet there.
Well, the town of Carver has.
The town of Carver hasn't either, and I think it's important to know that your issue is with an applicant and other private property owner that has certain land rights vested within his property. He has chosen to exercise those based upon the law of Carver, with our bylaws, et cetera. He has a certain right. You, as abutters, believe that he shouldn't be able to do that. Your fight is with him over the existing laws that everyone uses.
Correct, and we have rights, too. And we follow the rules for the past two and a half years, going before the boards we are supposed to do. Bring in our story, got to the ZBA. They agreed with us. They told them that that did not belong there. Not under the Safety Welfare Act or whatever it was. It did not belong there. So they did a minor modification that sets it back, what, a few more feet, puts the hill, and now it's okay?
Because I'd like to finish my earlier statement, but they did not create the document. The applicant came in and filed a modified application. It's his or her right to do that, and they have to react to that. That's why the planning board reacted to that. It wasn't the town that filed a modified application. It was the applicant himself. So now you have a new project in front of you versus the old project. Technically, you can look at this thing as it started all over again.
So is this just going to go on and on?
It potentially can, yes.
So how can we make it?
And that's what the Constitution allows. Whether we like it or not, these are the rules they have to abide by.
I just feel if this was handled correctly the first time, and you got the legal advice that you should have on this specific site, we wouldn't be here now, and we're paying the price.
The town received the legal advice, and then they appealed it to court. The town then had to go to court and make its justification for this.
But we asked when this first started, two years ago, that they got legal advice in. And the only legal advice they got was a very broad sheet on a broad subject, not this specific site in this neighborhood.
And I think my last point I'd like to make is, although I wasn't at the executive session of the Selectmen, I did read the minutes of the meeting, and members clearly wanted to have some more public hearings on this project. And the only one that I can offer you right now is the one that will have to come in front of the ZBA as a full-blown public hearing.
At our cost.
All right, last one on the solar project.
Chris McCaffrey, 71 Purchase Street. Sir, you said there's 200 feet. I have the plan right here. There's not 200 feet to my property line, so it doesn't meet the bylaw. New bylaw also requires a special permit that they don't have. The old bylaws have under 20 to 10, a table of uses for that zone, residential, agricultural. And it's not in that list of uses, and it specifically states, if it's not in the table of uses, it's not allowed. The proponent tried to use Chapter 48 as an exemption, because they recognized that it was not allowed under the zoning law. In the town council opinion, in the ZBA decision, both are that the exemption doesn't apply, so it's illegal.
I would bring those issues up to the zoning Board of Appeals once the building permit has been issued. That's the venue to deal with that. This board doesn't have the authority to deal with that. This is a new project that's been filed, an amended project.
Then why didn't they have to apply under the new?
Because they're grandfathered from the original project.
So there's two quick points I want to make. On the planning board, when they say it's a minor modification, they don't allow public input.
They allow public input. They are not required to send out notices to every individual household.
I've been to planning board meetings for a minor modification when Borrego Solar first got the project, and they did not allow public input. I was there.
Yeah. You asked me a statement. Do they not allow it? It's... They have to give notice. If it's a minor modification, they're not required to send out notices to every individual property owner. And your point as well made over there by Sarah is that it's up to the chair whether they take input.
Chris, what I would suggest to you, Chris, is that you put your head together with Eric and James and the rest of the group over there.
Yeah, look, I would like to meet, I'd like to have a, set something up with the neighborhood and you to go over some of this stuff. But the other thing is that, once the building permit is issued, the project will be done in a week. It doesn't, the zoning board will plan, it'll be the next meeting a month, and it'll be done, and it will be no recourse.
Is that what happened the last time a permit was filed?
Yes, soon as the permit was issued, they were out there with 50 guys and trucks and everything. They cut the place down and put utility poles in and the racks and everything in 10 days. The work they did, so. Thanks for your time.
Andrew, different topic?
It's the same, but I have some other information.
Okay, that was the last one on this one, okay? We got to move this along. Somebody got something? No?
I'll go with, you know what I'm going to talk about.
Well, you heard the discussion earlier. We don't want to bring up people, names, and personalities.
Let me ask this question then. Can I meet with you sometime in the coming week?
We can meet next week, yes.
And we can sit down and talk, and I got something to show you.
Okay, and I may ask Dick or Mike to join me, because they have the history of the project.
That's absolutely fine.
I will also do that.
Okay, because...
We'll have Elaine set up a meeting, just so we can talk about this in more detail.
Yeah, I've been doing my homework.
Okay.
And this thing should be brought to...
No, that's perfect. We'll set up a meeting and do that next week.
Thank you. We can use all the information and help you can give us.
And you might have the other side of the story.
Right.
Well, I, yeah, I do have more.
You should be using the microphone. People can hear you.
Okay. All right.
I, you know, we don't want to get into personalities or anything like that. But I do have more input.
All right, Mr.... Okay, Mr. Geisler, we'll make an appointment, and we'll sit down and discuss this in private, okay?
I'll give you a rough call.
Yep, call Elaine, and she'll set it up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, next. Rod? How you doing there, shipmate?
So-so. Rod Forrester, 13 Lincoln Circle, Cranberry Village. Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'd like to ask the town administrator a question, please.
Absolutely, go ahead.
Sir, you were mentioning earlier concerning the water truck.
Mm-hmm.
I was the gentleman who spoke about that at the last meeting.
Yes, sir.
And you mentioned that when they hired this company to manage the North Carver Waterfield, the Cranberry Village well and the town wells, as part of their arrangement when they hired them, that the truck was included?
They have use of the vehicle.
If they so choose.
Correct.
Because I, if you're saying they're using this two days a week, it seems like very small, like a very small usage for something so expensive, like the truck was in the mid $50,000 range, I believe.
I think it was $55,000, and...
And what are they using it for? Is it something to do with the equipment on the truck, or other than the plow, or?
I don't have information on specifically what they're using it for and how much they're using it for. What I do know is that it's part of their maintenance contract, that they have use of the vehicle. Yes, it was purchased for $55,000. We own the truck now. However...
We own it outright.
I think it's a lease to own, but we could own it outright. I'll double-check on that. In addition to that, I do believe that there may have been some use of the vehicle by the town facility department to do some plowing during the storm last Wednesday, so it may have served multiple purposes.
Because I had often thought that having it seen, it sit there for so long that even if it was under a lease agreement, that maybe they could get out of it, because it, you know, it's like a lot of money. It's just, you know, it really isn't like being well spent. Because I know, like, they took a piece of dough out of our enterprise fund for our well, because the town owned it and to buy, purchase this thing. And, you know, our expenses up there quite a bit now with water. We've done a lot of repairs down there with our piping and so forth. They try to cut down on expenses. So I just wanted to make sure I heard that straight. I understand a little better now.
I think if the circumstances were different than you had right now, where we had town employees actually operating the facility, my guess is if this was started today, and the town was just hiring a private contractor, it would not supply a vehicle. But again, we're dealing with a legacy issue, so there is some expense to it in generally canceling these leases. You're usually locked into the whole lease.
As you say, like, quite a large deficit with the North Carver thing.
When the truck was purchased, Rod, those, we actually had people working for the water department, so it was...
Exactly, I remember.
There were town employees, and that no longer is the case. So, you know, we are saddled with the truck that we own. But we're getting multiple uses out of it between plowing and allowing the contractors to use that when they do work on the water system, so.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
But I appreciate your concerns. Yes, Jane, the other half of the dynamic duo.
Did I hear it's somebody's birthday today? Happy birthday, Mr. Forrester.
Happy birthday to you.
They got it wrong, by the way. It's not 65, 66. Oops.
I thought he was 21. Happy birthday.
Looks like he just got off the ship.
He may go overboard.
Yes, Jane.
Jane Forrester, 13 Lincoln Circle. First of all, welcome to the new town administrator. My question, or I don't know if it's a question or an offering, but hearing about the drug problem in town, I'm well aware that there is a very bad drug problem in this town, and hearing the chief speak, I just wanted to put out for thought, had anybody thought that the possibility of using actual parents that would speak, I'm the mother of a heroin addict of 27 years now. He's been a heroin addict. I think I have a message. I think I can speak well to any child. I'll go to any school. I'll talk to anybody. I'm afraid of nobody, and...
We're all afraid of you, though. That's an excellent idea. It really is.
I think, you know, I don't have a degree, but I can talk to people. And I pretty much know about anything you want to know about any drug or any actions that they use. I've seen it all. And if I can reach...
I think Chief Doofly's writing down on his notebook.
I hope so.
Call Jane Forrester.
Anytime.
And then we also have mobilizing the community task force on February 4th.
Okay.
6:30 at the middle high school.
Okay.
That'd be a perfect opportunity as well.
Yep, I would...
But you know, that might be a great idea for the schools, to have them bring in people that have been involved in this, and just talk to the younger kids, because you got to get them before they get on this stuff. It doesn't do any good after...
My son was 12.
Yeah. When he started taking heroin.
He started. He now lives in a nursing home, because on October, August 4th, I'm sorry, he overdosed. He was injecting heroin into his neck, and as a result, he's partially paralyzed. He doesn't have the use of his arms. However, he lived. He was not supposed to. He was five weeks in CCU on full life support.
He's how old now, Jane?
Forty. He turned 40 in one of the nursing homes. Yes.
Jane, I think sometimes somebody like yourself can have a bigger impact than some expert.
I hope so. I'm willing to do whatever you people would like me to do, that I'm capable of.
Well, I think that's a fantastic offer, and we all sympathize with you in the trials and tribulations that you've had to endure.
Well, I handle it. We're a family, but thank you.
Thank you very much.
We love our son. Thank you very much.
God bless you.
Thank you, Jane.
Thank you.
All right, Robert.
Robert Velvin, 26 Kate Street. I had you guys send out some information related to needle disposal boxes. Again, with the drug issue here, it's a different way of thinking about things for information out there. There are availability out there. It's just cost and where to put them, if you want to go that route. What needle disposal boxes are is similar to a mailbox, where people can go and drop them off. You hire a company, they come in weekly, bi-weekly, clean it all out, and starts all over again. Communities are using these in mostly city areas. There are very few around here.
Maybe Mr. Milonowski could talk to Mr. Walsh, Emergency Medical Services, and see if there's something that they may be able to do through their budget. I know the police are...
And also, Mr. Chairman, through the health agent, too, the Board of Health, the other things, like I put in there, I said, different businesses could put up little needle boxes. Like I said, you want to stop the drugs, unfortunately, it's there, all right? People that throw the needles around, I put something online there that I have been all over the place, as being a phlebotomist and dealing with needles every single day. I went on to Boston to go to the town, the State House, and inside the parking garage, finding needles just dropped right there. Any kid can pick them up. I found them, believe it or not, and I gave it to one of the police officers in front of Town Hall here. I popped it into a bottle, sealed it up, and I gave it to one of the police officers that needs to be disposed of.
Well, they throw them out the windows of the cars. Well, they throw them out the windows of the cars.
Exactly. I mean, disposal of them needs to be done, all right? But we need to give an option out there, because right now, there is no option.
Well, there is. You can call the police department, and we'll come retrieve them.
I don't think a heroin addict is gonna do that, and even to the expense of, my son's a diabetic, okay? Got no education. Luckily, my wife and I are both in the health industry. Got no education of how to dispose of your needles. When I was a younger guy, working in a restaurant at the Armour Factory in Pembroke there, went to go throw the trash in, and what's in there? Someone threw their trash in there. Well, guess what? There were all needles in there. Come to find out, it was a diabetic, and he didn't know where to put them, how to handle them. So I mean, it's education like that that needs to be taken care of.
You're absolutely right, and I'm hoping that that'll be part of the forum that the chief presents. And this is supposed to be an ongoing thing, you know?
I mean, with that, the school called out to us, because we're on a phone list, to let us know, but I don't think, they knew about it, because they didn't get a phone call about things like this, that aren't on the phone list to say, hey, this is a community-wide event. And I mean, we're only really dealing with one aspect of this for notification of people, that if this is gonna be a town-wide thing, then we need to turn around and be globally instead of just locally.
Right. It's one of the challenges we have, is getting a notice out to the entire town.
Right.
We don't have an opportunity with any of the venues we have to do that. But it is something that we'll look at with more technology and be able to use the school blackboard, and then reverse 911, and then additional sources so that we can reach the entire town on issues like this.
The reverse 911 is an excellent tool.
Yeah, but that's owned by the sheriff's department. It's not our own, so we're limited in its use.
The next thing is, I passed it out tonight. I'm sorry I didn't get it to you sooner. It's an idea of mine about a bylaw committee, where this would be a separate committee. We'd just look at bylaws. I didn't provide it, I'm sorry, Mr. Town Administrator, I didn't get you a copy. I'd send it out to the other members. I'll give you a copy for it. But just something to bite on, chew on, take a look at. It would be a committee that the board would go ahead and appoint to look at bylaws. Look at our current bylaws, any bylaws that are coming up. It's a separate venue than going to the planning board, which is the current one now.
I think the town administrator is already thinking along those lines. He's discussed a-
Excellent.
There's some discrepancies with the bylaws that need to be looked at as part of a governance effort.
Can I ask Bob a question?
Weren't you proposing that as part of your governance committee?
Yeah, I hope to bring that forward in next meeting.
Bob, I want to commend you for going above and beyond in this town in terms of, I know, you know, you're always very vocal, and a lot of people, you know, see you only in one light, but I got to tell you, I commend you on a lot of the things you've done for this town and the effort you put in to try to help out, bringing ideas to the table. This is a great idea. Can I just ask a question about this?
Yes.
Is, would these be on the streets for the addict to put in?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. I mean, there's also, I mean, there's different companies that you can mail in. They'll give you a box, and you mail it back to them through the mail. I mean, that costs money.
Yeah.
Okay, it's not free. I mean, like I said, those things, I mean, when I looked up at one company, I think it was like $130 to come every week to do it. Well, if you don't need it every week, you wouldn't do that. But $130 bucks every month, that really isn't a-
Well, maybe we could have the boxes, and EMS could get rid of everything.
They would have to be really secure, too, I would think.
Actually, the boxes are quite secure.
Yeah.
They are very well-made. I've talked to a couple of manufacturers already about them. The one that's posted on Calgary right there, that's cemented into the ground, and it's, you can't break into it unless you really want to. But who's gonna want a dirty needle?
It's a good idea.
All right.
Even if we put it in the prominent areas where most of the complaints are coming through, it's a start, something to think about.
And one last thing, it's actually a kudos, I want to, last thing, is when you brought up the new fire hoses for the fire department, I think there was one little thing that was kind of left off of that, and it's our fire department, as a great fire department, we have. They always look at the best usage for what we have and what we overused our stuff or whatnot to recycle it. The old hoses that are gonna get recycled, I want to say they're going to a fire department in New Hampshire or Maine or something like that. They're strapped for their budget or whatnot, and these will actually be used for another town. So I want to, kudos to the fire chief for looking out and reusing our stuff and giving it to another company.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you very much.
And Bob, before you leave, I think you should be publicly commended, like Helen said. You're always proactive. When something comes up, you always come up with something. If we had more citizens like you, then we'd be in a much better place.
Thank you very much. It's changed a new ethic this year. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Going once, twice, thrice, hearing none, seeing none. Okay. That ends the public comment period, and at this time, I will-
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
And let it be known that it's two minutes before nine, not eight o'clock.
Blame this one on Mr. Milonowski.
Welcome to Carver.
We'll blame this on Mr. Milonowski tonight.
We're not at three hours.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?